This forum is a nonpartisan event designed to promote, provide voters with information directly from the candidates. Anyone who has a role coordinating with a candidate or who is involved with the campaign, excuse themselves from the process of developing questions. All candidates were informed about the format and the questions in advance of the event. It's also important for you to know that all candidates were invited to participate in the event. We got to the questions by having community organizations, residents of District One, and high school students with the environmental justice clubs at Hilltop and Bonita High, who submitted questions for the candidates. The program planning committee reviewed all the questions and brought them together to ensure that the program reflects the top priorities of the community and that they are compliant with our legal status as a nonpartisan organization. The order in which the candidates are going to start speaking at each stage has been randomized, and our program will begin with candidate opening statements. Then we'll jump into some open-ended questions that will be coming, be asked by members of the community and coalition representatives. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer open-ended questions. The open-ended questions will then be followed by a rapid-fire set of questions that are yes or no questions, where candidates will need to respond to those questions very quickly. They'll have about 15 seconds to make their decision about yes or no. And then each candidate will have a minute at the end to do a closing statement. Good? All right. Opening is two minutes. And we have a timepiece here, so just one. They're doing that. Good work for us. Okay, so with that, I'd like to invite Carolina Chavez to provide her opening statement, and then we'll hear from Paloma Aguirre.
Should I come up? First of all, thank you for everyone that made this possible. This is the number-one priority, connecting with the community, right? And our hosts, they promised me the best food that I've ever tasted, so someone save me a samosa, okay? The chai is incredible. I don't know who did that, but it's incredible. Well, I'm Carolina Chavez. I have 22 years of experience in the regional, just regionally. I grew up here, and what I was, what I'm all about is just by national relations, economic development, international trade, housing, unsheltered. I'm the vice mayor of the city of Chula Vista. We are the safest incorporated city in the county. And you know, just all in all, we have a really well-balanced budget. We didn't have any flood victims in Chula Vista because we are taking care of our communities, right? You have to be on top of it. We are thriving with our unsheltered program. We have the resources that we're implementing also for mental health and for childcare. That is very important. For people to be able to drive, you have to take care of their foundation as well. So you have to provide the childcare necessary for them to also seek jobs, also the, not just housing, but also all these, all these programs that they need for them to get back on their feet, right? Mental health, addiction, facilities, and we're working very hard with that. What am I about? Who am I? I am nobody, right? I'm just someone that's here to do good, to connect with the community, to listen to them, to understand. I've been doing this for 22 years in the region. I worked with federal, state, municipal government on both sides of the border. I grew, I started as a reporter when I was 18, and here I am now, right? I'm just connecting with the community and doing, doing right by them and allocating, fighting federal and state as of today to bring resources locally here to our community again. So thank you so much, Carolina Chavez.
Hi, everyone. I'm so grateful to be here with you all. It's so inspiring to see how many different organizations came forward and put this together, and especially the students, who I'm sure form-related these questions, will really appreciate the civic engagement. I'm really big on that. My name is Paloma Aguirre. I currently serve as the mayor of the city of Imperial Beach. I am not born and raised here. I was born in San Francisco to Mexican immigrants who waited tables for a living. I was then moved back to Mexico, so most of my formative years I spent in Mexico, in Puerto Vallarta, where my mom and my grandma were from. But I always wanted to come back to go to college and compete in surfing. So in 2001, I went surfing in Imperial Beach, and I fell in love with it and never wanted to leave. So since then, I dedicated most of my adult professional life to community organizing around social, environmental, and economic justice. I started the Chula Vista chapter of Acorn, where we organized around charity care, predatory lending issues, and immigration. But I later then became involved with the biggest environmental and public health crisis, which is the Tijuana River sewage crisis, impacting all of our lives in many different ways. So in 2017, I was working in Congress. I moved back after Trump was elected the first time and ran for office. I'd never been involved in politics or the party, and I was the first Latina ever to be elected to the city of Imperial Beach. And now I'm very proud to be the first mayor ever elected to a border town, which is the city of Imperial Beach. I'm running to fight for community. I'm always putting community first, people first, and whether that is the sewage crisis, homelessness, housing, cost of living, or increasing the quality of life for all of us, not just for the wealthy few, is going to be my priority when I become the next county board of supervisors. So thank you so much for your attention.
Okay, so I want to, okay. I want to thank the candidates for their opening statements, and now we're going to get into our section with open-ended questions. So when this happens, Paloma, we'll start with you for the first question. So the first question will be asked by Itzel, you met, from Alliance San Diego.
All right. Thank you so much. So again, my name is Itzel Maranachávez, civic engagement director with Alliance San Diego, and also an immigrant myself. And so the question is, immigrants and refugees are a significant and important population in San Diego County. 25% of residents were born in another country, and half of all school-aged kids have an immigrant parent. How will you protect human rights and uphold the dignity of immigrants and refugees in our region?
Thank you for that question. As ISDF knows very well, your values are, you know, you live your values where you put your money. So the budget process is incredibly important, especially at the county, because it's all of our taxpayer dollars. We have $8.4 billion budget and $2.4 billion in reserves. So it's important to reinvest, especially as immigrant rights are under attack and there's proposed mass deportations of our immigrant brothers and sisters. We need to make sure that we invest in resources to protect them, whether that looks in increasing the budget for the Office of Immigration and Refugees or whether it's investing more in the nonprofits that are serving and giving legal counsel to people who need that without resources. We need to expand their budgets, and we need to mobilize and organize to push back because it's absolutely unacceptable to see families being ripped apart, to see deportations happening in the middle of the day, to see ICE showing up in masks and without insignias, detaining people without due process. Because whether you're an immigrant or not, we all have rights in this great nation, and they should be respected. And we are not seeing that happen with ICE raids. So we need to make sure that we collectively work together and create safe spaces for our immigrant brothers and sisters at schools, at community centers, and at churches. Because what's happening right now is completely unacceptable. We're seeing even citizens being detained for weeks. And now we had a whole cohort of people deported to Venezuela, and they're in El Salvador without any due process and without knowing what their next step is. That is absolutely unacceptable, absolutely un-American. Thank you.
So my story begins with my grandparents, right? My grandfather was a strawberry field picker. And he used to work at 14, 16-hour days, and he had to sleep sitting down because, you know, he couldn't lay down flat. There was no unions, no labor protection, nothing. So that's how my story began, right? My parents were all a product in each and every way of immigration. And we need to be mindful and compassionate to think that people are fleeing their country, their state of origin, because they are scared, because they are endangered. Do I agree with ICE having so much access to our school systems, to creating this chaos and this fear? Never. Do I agree if, you know, if there's a rapist or a murderer that happens to be an immigrant? I do believe that they should have, that we all should have same rules for everybody. But I, my roots, my heart, I was just at the procession at Logan a few months ago, and we were listening to all these testimonials, and it's, we shouldn't be electing leaders that don't understand it, that haven't never lived it, that have no compassion. Because we don't need divisiveness in this day and age. We need to stand together and protect. And yes, we have an $8.5 billion budget in the county. And the first thing I'm going to do right now, I'm telling you, is have, make an, request an audit. Because I need to know what programs we're funding, what we're not funding, and we need to reinvest in what compassionate programs we create for our community. Every member of the community should feel safe, should feel heard, and should be in peace with the community and the people that are representing them. It doesn't matter. God doesn't see race, gender, or color of your skin. So we need to represent everyone equally, and that's the thing I need right now.
Thank you. All right. Our second question will be asked by Anthony, an Aces member.
Oh, thank you very much. So I'm Anthony Azul. I'm a member of Aces, and I live in District One. This question is near to my heart because I'm an Iraq War veteran, and after an extended stay in the hospital, I found myself homeless. So my question to the candidates is, with San Diego's escalating homelessness crisis, it underscores the need for preventative measures, such as the increased funding for programs to address the root cause of homelessness. San Diego's latest homelessness census shows that people entered, more people entered homelessness in 2024 than any other year. Millions of dollars spent providing outreach and assistance via housing, and while that is important, it's not enough done to prevent people from falling into homelessness in the first place. What investments would y'all make to prevent, make in prevention-focused measures?
So thank you for that question. Yes, another round of applause for him. I guess Anthony has a lot of support. So I thank you for that question because people don't understand that it's at all income levels. We're living our worst, the worst crisis of a house in our lifetime, right now. We are living the worst housing crisis of our lifetime. And it's not just low income. It's on every income level. I walk all over this district, and I'm telling you right now, people that have a mortgage are telling me, you know what? I have this great job, three figures, I'm making a year, but if I get sick, I'm going to lose my house. If I miss two payments, I'm going to lose my house because I live paycheck to paycheck. And people don't realize how vulnerable that puts us. We're so, we're so bad in creating policy at a county level that creates this holistic solution. We don't have enough, first of all, first buyer programs. We're not investing enough in that. We're not investing enough in creating a program that also, you know, gives solutions to people that are going through these tough times. We don't have enough bilingual, multilingual information centers. We need to invest more. We have such a huge budget. We have budgets and reserves. We lost $10 million that was going to be invested for housing in Spring Valley. And because we couldn't get our, we couldn't coordinate out of, we lost it to San Jose. And that $10 million was going to convert into $20 million because of the factor that we can seek out funding for when it's referred to housing. So the county needs to bring more efforts, do more, have a stronger effort in bringing good actors to the table and creating housing that's affordable, but on a housing level.
Thank you for that question. So I'm not someone that believes that you're going to build your way out of this housing crisis. And we can't talk about homelessness without talking about housing. We need to keep people housed, period. And it's important to create and invest in housing production, and it's important to give incentives to developers. But if we expect them out of the good nature of their heart to just create more affordable housing, it's not going to happen unless the government gets involved and mandates it. Now, another thing that's incredibly important, it's a phenomenon called rent evictions. It's happening everywhere. State law now prevents rents being increased more than 10%. So a way that landlords are getting away with that is kicking people out under the guise of substantial remodel and jacking up the prices. We saw that sadly, over 160 families displaced in Imperial Beach. We tried the best we could, but it was very hard with the conservative majority council. At the county level, we have all of the unincorporated areas. So that's something that we need to take a close look at. How do we ban rent evictions? How do we implement just cause ordinances so that we can help people land on their feet? Because if we think that we can just kick people out and produce housing at market rate, and then we ask ourselves, oh, we have, why do we have this homelessness crisis? And then we end up investing billions of dollars annually to no avail because the homeless population has gone up as well as our investment. So something isn't working. And in my opinion, we need to protect people who are already housed and give them a fighting chance so that they don't end up on the street, like sadly, a lot of families are ending up now. Thank you.
Our third question will be asked by Daniel. Daniel is a student at Bonita High.
Hello, my name is Dan Fernandez. I'm a District One resident who's a senior at Bonita Vista High School and the South Bay Community Liaisoner to an ASI 350. And as a Chicano youth, I wanted to ask, that if wage theft affects everyone, how is it that people under 24 are twice as likely to be paid less than the minimum wage? San Diego's County Office of Labor Standard Enforcement is an innovator of the state in ensuring that workers get the wages they're expected. But even with the county office and the state labor commissioner focusing on protecting worker rights, we still see many workers experiencing wage theft and other forms of exploitation. What policies or initiatives would you support to strengthen worker rights and protection in San Diego County?
Thank you so much for your very thoughtful question and for being here. I wish at high school I was doing the same. So we need better or stronger penalties and enforcement, first and foremost, because a lot of companies just do that, and they get away with it, and they use it as a cost of doing business. That's absolutely unacceptable. We need to create a task force at the county that could actually focus on this and make sure that there's follow-through. We also need to help educate our youth, you know? They need to know what their rights are and what they're entitled to. We also need to increase wages, period. We see rents go up. We see prices of groceries go up, and wages are stagnant, have been stagnant for a long, long time. And it's ridiculous that some of our specialized, for example, workers at the county who are taking care of our most vulnerable, our elderly, then, you know, compromise, our children, are making less than what you make at McDonald's. That is wild. That should never be the case. These are your taxpayer dollars at the county. Your taxpayer dollars should be going back to the community in the form of services, of education, of measures that increase your quality of life, not that make it worse. Thank you.
I think it's very important. Thank you for that question, first and foremost, and thank you for being here. I think it's very important that when we address workers' rights, we address the foundation, the pillars of our community. We are driving our workforce. We are driving our good actors out of the county. There, I've had this discussion with many people that work in the county, that work around the county, that work throughout the county, right? And they have been mentioning, you know, I'm looking for a house down in Bahia, in Tijuana, because I can't live here anymore. I mean, I have to go to work, so I have to pay for childcare. And childcare is $1,500, right? We're not, we're not creating policy, and we're not creating unions, and we're not bringing the people that understand these issues to the table. And I'm going to say it, sometimes we have people creating policy out of their privilege without understanding the community they're representing. And we need to take that away. We need people that grow, grew up here. You know, I was someone that, you know, my dad fell sick one year, and we couldn't make rent. And I used to hide from the land, right? We grew up like that. I was someone that I, I took the trolley every single day when I was around 20 years old, and woke up in the morning knowing that I couldn't wear high heels. And I think that's why I wear, to this day, so much black, right? Because you don't feel safe. You don't feel hurt. You don't feel, you don't feel seen. So we need to bring all these groups, these representatives of workers' groups, to the table and say, how can we work with you to create policy, to allocate funding? $8.5 billion. We need to create a holistic solution where we can keep our good workforce and their families and their foundations safe as well.
Our next question will be asked by Abby. Abby is a student at Hilltop High.
Hi, my name is Abby Costello, and I'm a student at Hilltop High School, and I'm also the Youth for Climate intern at San Diego 350. I'm also a District One resident in Chula Vista. And growing up in Chula Vista, seeing the impacts of pollution, heat, and disease on my community is what made me get involved in environmental advocacy. For decades, families in District One have been forced to live with the toxic impacts of the Tijuana River sewage crisis. Children suffer from respiratory issues and headaches. Schools have limited outdoor activities, and parents fear letting their kids play outside. District One residents fall ill just by breathing the air in their neighborhoods. This ongoing public health and environmental disaster has disproportionately harmed working-class communities and communities of color who have been left without solutions. What actions would you take to address this ongoing emergency and prevent future environmental hazards to protect the health and well-being of District One residents?
First of all, thank you. You're my constituent from Chula Vista. Thank you for being here, and this is something that we need to be clear. If this was happening anywhere else in the nation, let's say even La Jolla, it would have been fixed like that, right? This is not a new issue, right? The infrastructure for sewage in Tijuana specifically was designed for this less than a million people. And then you add the manufacturer component, and then you add the most transited border in the world, and you have all these factors of people migrating to Tijuana that are increasing this sewage issue. I want to bring the federal government, that's the uniqueness of what I've done for 22 years. I've also worked with the Mexican government. And I just, three weeks ago, had a meeting with the undersecretary of tourism, of federal tourism. And I, they are also new to that office. They came in, in October-ish, to this office, and they are trying to get, I know there's many funding, there's many things that have been happening, but I'm telling you right now that it's not a lack of resource, it's a lack of will. Because the federal government is so far away from this border region that they are just not that invested. Yes, we have allocated millions that I'm sure Mayor Paloma is going to talk more about, but we can do so much more. And we need to create a table and a task force where we have the Mexican federal government, the state and municipal government, and the ones from the side on the border, working together on a monthly basis. This is something that, infrastructure-wise, it's not just the treatment plans. Infrastructure-wise, there's a huge crisis in the city of Tijuana because this sewage was not designed for more than a million people, and they're almost hitting four million right now. So it's something that we need to bring them to the table and work holistically with them to create solutions and create the funding that's necessary for that side of the border as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abby, for that question. So it's very simple. You have to fight like hell, because that's what we've been doing. We've been working with the Mexican government. That's why they're upgrading the sewage treatment plant six miles south of the border. That took years of advocacy of working in roundtables and advocacy across the border. We've also advocated on this side to increase and upgrade the International Sewage Treatment Plant to double its capacity from 25 to 50 million gallons. But sadly, the main source of pollution is not being addressed, which is the Tijuana River itself. And that carries industrial waste, involutore organic compounds, and chemicals and heavy metals, like you said, that are making our families sick. And sadly, even though the last two years we've been reporting that to the county health officials, they haven't believed us. That's why we created a task force already to do the work of the county because there's been a huge vacuum of leadership by our previous supervisor, who declared the air safe, when we know it is not. When we know these chemicals are carcinogenic, bioaccumulative, and have long-term health effects. I was just at the river yesterday, and you could smell it half a mile away. And we have schools. We have Berry Elementary, Southwest School, Mar Vista School, within less than a half a mile distance. So what am I going to do? I'm going to make sure that the river is diverted for treatment because if we continue to wait for Mexico to bring the solutions, we're going to be here another 20 years. And our communities deserve better. They deserve to be able to breathe clean air, swim in the ocean. Your beaches that are accessible to you all have been closed for over three years. And most importantly, we need not put more pollution in the watershed like my, not her, my other opponent, Vivian Moreno, who's proposing a landfill in the watersheds, when we already have a perfectly good, working landfill that is going to be good until 2083. So that's what I would do. We also need medical interventions, and at minimum, distribute purifiers and air filters, which is something that we desperately need that hasn't been given. Thank you.
I'm going to take a little pause so our interpreters get to take a breath. Our next question is going to be asked by Vicente from Mid-City Can.
Hello, my name is Vicente Sires, and I'm a member of Mid-City Can's youth council. I've been impacted by San Diego's public transit as my everyday tasks and responsibilities are heavily reliant on the various networks that run through downtown San Diego and city heights. And so are those of the youth that live in District One. A significant number of San Diego's transit riders live in District One, yet the current infrastructure is failing to meet their needs, leaving many residents without reliable access to jobs, schools, and healthcare. What plans or specific projects do you support to improve public transit in District One, ensuring residents have equitable access to these essential destinations through better frequency and routes? Thank you.
Thank you so much for that question. As someone who served on MTS for four years, it's something that's very close and dear to my heart, public transit. As a young adult, I chose to live in Imperial Beach while I was putting myself through college at USC, and I didn't own a car. So I had to take two buses and a trolley and then a tram to make it up to campus. And it took me about two to three hours to get to school. So something that we prioritize at MTS through Sandag with youth opportunity passes, that's something I have the privilege and honor to vote in support of. I think we should raise the age to 24, and ideally, public transit should be free. We need to make sure that we make our services more efficient and that they can be competitive with commuting car times, right? So in order to do that, we need to increase the grading at all of our trolley stations in the South Bay. We need to make sure we increase the frequency of the trolley. The blue line is the backbone of our trolleys, of our transit system. We need to make sure that it runs even to the late night so that workers who work at night have the ability to get home. We need to make sure that we increase buses that are zero emissions. I'm very proud to have defended bus route 227, which runs from Oltay to the beach. I'm very proud to have defended Bus Route 227, which runs from Olti to the beach. It's the only bus that brings you from the border to the beach. And sadly, some of my ID constituents have been fighting to eliminate it, because they just don't like to see the buses on their streets. And I say, "No." Because this is not just about Imperial Beach, it's about all of us as a whole, as a society. We need to make sure that we ensure that transit-dependent riders have good, safe, reliable transportation. And we need to make sure that enforcement isn't overdone. That's something when I was a Vice Chair of Public Security at MTS, we were seeing 80 to 85% of Black and Brown men being targeted for fare evasion tickets, which can be extremely detrimental to their lives. And that's something that we worked on as well. My thanks.
First of all, thank you for that question. I've been saying this for the longest time. I, I served on the board of MTS two years ago, and, you know, just, we lack so much common sense sometimes, right? We have people in these leadership positions that don't live in District One, right? And they're creating policy that affects the riders. The blue line, as mentioned, is the most transited line in the county, and let me tell you, it's the most dirtiest, smelliest, and it doesn't, you don't feel safe on it, right? So when I was on the Security Committee, I said, "Let's do a focus group." And what came back? Exactly what I grew up, right? People don't feel safe. I can run, but my kids can't. That's what came back. Both women, men, everyone across the board felt unsafe. And we added 47 new staff members to just be on site. Because I had a colleague of mine that was getting harassed and screamed racial slurs from Chula Vista to downtown San Diego. She would get out of a trolley cart, they would follow her, and then keep on going. And then I asked the staff at MTS, "So, do we have live feed? Are we communicating to the authorities to make sure this leave people feel safe when riding?" And they said, "No, we just recorded, in case of an investigation." We need to do better, right? So, we are sending almost 100,000 people going northbound to work, to study for tourism, and then after 11:30 PM, we don't have anything going southbound. Common sense. What time does the workforce get out, right? Restaurants, hotels, offices. We don't have common sense when we're creating policy. We just cut the ribbon for the 9:10 of an initiative I put forward that goes from 12:30 AM to 5:30 AM, southbound. Common sense, we're lacking it, because the people that are deciding this, creating these policies, they'll live in District One.
Our next question comes from Alejandro from Mid City Can.
Hi, my name's Alejandro Martinez. I'm a District One, born and raised in 664, so I've been transported my whole life. My connection to this issue is one that is actually very physical. I used to be a teaching artist here at the Arts, at the Rhythm and Survive, and also throughout JACS and the Juvenile Port District in San Diego. So my question is, what kind of policies and programs would you support to decrease the involvement of law enforcement and the juvenile legal system in the lives of our youth? Thank you.
First of all, we, we need to fight against the federal government, and I'm saying it, and I don't care. We need to fight the federal government and the state government. Right now, we need to fight everyone, to bring resources back to our school systems, the after-school programs, everything that makes, we don't have the luxury of not having parents stay at home to take care of their kids, right? And if they're not in childcare, which I mentioned was extremely expensive, it's almost a luxury nowadays, if we don't have that, they're in school. And if we start defunding programs in school, like we've heard the federal government say they want to do, we're gonna get into a whole lot of trouble. And it's not fighting against anyone, it's not fighting against the police, it's not, it's not defunding our school system. We need to empower, empower our school system, our teachers. That many times, our teachers are going above and beyond, and they're understaffed and underpaid as well. So what do we need to do? We need to work to create programs. And, so the county is the bridge that brings those federal resources. We produce $60 billion, we produce $60 billion in international trade at our border in District One, that we're sending to the federal and state government. We are not getting our fair share. And from that fair share, we should allocate money directly to the after-school programs, directly to the schools, and directly also to the childcare programs. Because sometimes we're telling the teachers to stay more hours, but they don't have any resources. They have to pay out of pocket, they're paying for resources, they're paying for school supplies, they're paying for the activities they produce for their kids. And that's where we're starting off bad, we're defunding the most crucial backbone of our community.
Thank you for that question. You have to invest in after-school programs, you have to invest in diminishing recidivism too. It's something that I've been hearing a lot about, there's not, there's no access for counseling services. When youths maybe have had one misdemeanor or something, there's lots of, plenty of opportunity to get them to move away from a life of crime, or to fall into the cultural pressures of their peers. And if we don't invest in these types of services and counseling services to get them the help they need, because they may be experiencing behavioral pressures or dynamics in their families and their support systems that are too strong, they need that intervention. And we don't have enough social services intervention, because the county hasn't been putting the money towards these programs. I was meeting with the probation officers, and they were saying, "Our entire job is to get these kids back on track." And they don't even have access to these programs and services in South Bay. They don't have enough access to them. Now, that's one side of the coin. The other side of the coin is keeping kids out of trouble. It's very simple, like this arts program, there's a lot of other organizations that are doing really good work, and we need to invest in these programs and these nonprofits, in programs like YMCA, and that develop skills in people and kids and youth and families. But we're not seeing that money where our mouth is. And to my colleague's point, there's gonna be a lot of cuts coming down from federal and state funding, but the county has enough funding, if there is enough political will to put that money where our values are. Thank you.
Okay, folks, if you're standing up and you've changed your mind, there's still some seats, you can take it right now, I'm telling you. All right, our next question is gonna come from Jen from Pride San Diego.
Hi, everyone, Jen LaBarbara, pronouns they/them, San Diego Pride, the Director of Education and Advocacy at Pride. And we have staff, volunteers, community partners that are all around the county, including a lot, a lot, a lot in South Bay and District One. And this question was created in collaboration with a couple of our partners, including the San Diego LGBTQI Community Center, who are also here and part of this forum. So, to, we're good, okay. LGBTQI+ community organizations create social safety nets for LGBTQI+ people in San Diego, filling gaps where government and public services often fall short. Many of our sources of funding for lesbian, gay, bisexual, trans, queer, intersex, and asexual-serving organizations and programs are threatened or disappearing due to the federal administration's attacks, which will result in even greater funding gaps, service shortfalls, and an increased burden on our community-based organizations. How are you going to ensure that your priorities and the county budget equitably support and include LGBTQI+ San Diegans?
Thank you for that question. So, as the only LGBTQ candidate in this race, this is a matter that's near and dear to my heart. We need to put more investment and more resources in the already LGBTQ-serving organizations. We need to make sure that we offset the funding that we're seeing from these cuts in these programs. Sadly, some are buckling to the pressure, right? We just heard about the Callexico Center that removed LGBTQ from its name. We need to push back. If there ever was a moment to take a stand and be strong and hold the line, it is now. And that's how we do it. We need to make sure that we double down on our values, that we double down on what is important to us, because we're seeing increasingly and ever-growing rates of suicide, especially LGBTQ youth. We're seeing spikes in LGBTQ homelessness, which is absolutely unacceptable. We need to invest in those services providing organizations. We also need to make sure that we bring down the hammer on hate crimes, especially against our LGBTQ siblings, because we're seeing a rise in that, and that's absolutely unacceptable. We need to work with our DA to make sure that our investigators and law enforcement are well-trained and have that cultural competency to understand the nuances of those issues, so that they could better prosecute these issues, so that these crimes, so that they don't happen again. So we need to really just make sure we put all of that front and center, and send a clear message that we will not be erased. Thank you.
So first of all, when I first ran for office, when I became a council member, I ran against an awakened church pastor that attacked MCakes, I don't know if you're familiar with it, it's M-cakes, on Third Avenue. And they received not hundreds, but thousands of hate letters and just death threats. And the divisiveness that we're seeing right now federally, we need someone that's a strong leader. I stood up, and I went there, and we created this whole synergy of consumers to visit their establishment. I still get texts from them, from back in the day of referrals that we did, right? We need to stand up and fight, not just once in a while, but every single day. We encounter, in every issues, in every, every area where we create policy, there's a pushback, right? If we're talking about housing for the unsheltered, there's a pushback. So what kind of unsheltered are you, are you talking about? Is it for everyone? Is it just for women? Is it for children? It's for everyone. When we create policies, we're creating holistic policies to serve all our community. There's, right now, I'm telling you, we have a discretionary budget as county supervisors. I am gonna partner up with the center, as I have been, with every single organization that's defending, and, you know, we have community centers in Chula Vista. There are these safe spaces for so many people that don't have a safe space at home, right? Or within their peers. And what we need to do is empower and create this funding that stands by itself, without any allocation from other programs, and help pull on, sorry, I said to top the left, but yes, I will actively be fighting for all LGBTQ+ communities. Thank you.
Our next question is from Kat, who is with Planned Parenthood.
Hi, y'all, my name is Kat, I use they/them pronouns. I'm the community organizer at Planned Parenthood of the Pacific Southwest for all of San Diego County. And part of my job is advocating for equitable access to healthcare for all our residents, in particular low-income folks across our county. So what is your plan to support access to abortion, gender-affirming care, and other resources that promote bodily autonomy across San Diego County? Access to essential healthcare services like abortion, gender-affirming care, and other resources that support bodily autonomy remains out of reach for many. With rising political attacks on reproductive and LGBTQIA rights, providing access to these critical services with more urgency than ever, so what is your plan for that?
Well, as an endorsed candidate for Planned Parenthood, thank you for that question. So here's the thing, right? We are severely under attack, and it breaks my heart to see so much hate against a woman's body. And so disenfranchising what we believe in to be, we've gotten so far right now, we've gotten so far, we fought so hard to be here, and to be set back 100 years, it really breaks my heart. We need people to fight, to fight the federal government, but also to fight to help this community that they're attacking. What I've been doing, I mean, my background for a decade is in healthcare. And I'm telling you right now, that there's people that have been coming up to me, right? Our former mayor of Callexico, Raúl Ureña, asked me for help to continue his process in Baja California, in Mexico City. He's looking into all these alternatives to continue with treatments, as millions of people are afraid right now, that they're not gonna, soon enough, if you have a miscarriage, if you want to have an abortion, if you want to just plan your, your life, you're not able to do that. So what's gonna happen if we don't have a leader to protect the community? We're gonna have a deficiency in our budgets, we're gonna have attack in our most vulnerable communities. And I'm telling you right now, I am that leader that can help and bridge and break back down those resources to help all these organizations. We need to protect the people that are going right now to Planned Parenthood. But in general, our community should feel safe with planning, planning their lives, and not being held accountable or incarcerated for them. Right now, we need to fight as a county, and I am that fighter. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. As one of the two 100% rated candidates by Planned Parenthood, I really take this seriously. We know that those cuts are coming, but as such, I am someone who supported Proposition 1, which was to trine the right to abortion in the California Constitution. It's also important to invest in centers that give these resources, right? We know Planned Parenthood is doing that, we know some of our local health clinics get some of our health funding. But we really are gonna need to put our mouth where, where money where our mouth is, because we have funding that has been left on the table. So this whole notion that we're going to go into a structural deficit of our budget, I believe is a fallacy. Because how can we go into a deficit when we're leaving $160 million that could go to mental wellness, to brick-and-mortar projects? So just that could go to a community center that could be multi-pronged, and could provide these access services for reproductive services, for gender-affirming care, for counseling services, and even as a community center. It's all about having the political will to do it. It's not taking no for an answer from staff. And I will say, county staff, they're doing amazing job, but the way they operate is, they see the county as a financial institution and not as a services-providing institution. Their policies of how money is managed are from 20, 30, 40 years ago, so they're extremely conservative. And if there ever was a time to buckle down because of all these cuts that are coming from the federal and state government, we need to make sure that the county provides those resources, so that we don't lose access to services that are critical to our LGBTQ and women in their reproductive rights. So we need to make sure that we invest in these services. Very simple. Thank you.
Our next question is going to come from Balaira, District One resident.
My name's Balaira Illar, I'm a resident of District One, and I'm also the Social Justice Coordinator for the First Unitarian Universalist Church in Chula Vista. San Diego County jails have one of the highest death rates in California, with many cases linked to inadequate mental health support. With about one-third of incarcerated individuals receiving mental health treatment, the jail system has become the county's largest mental health provider. How would you ensure that jails are not the county's primary response to mental health needs? And how would you hold the sheriff accountable for what is taking place inside the county's jails?
Thank you so much for that question. It's nice to see you again. So obviously, there's a huge need around mental health services in the county. Full stop. By 2027, we're gonna need at least 18,000 mental health care workers. So there's a huge deficit to begin with. At the county jails, it's absolutely unacceptable that we have one of the highest death rates in the nation. That's egregious. One is too many, for whatever reason. So we need to make sure that we're stopping contraband from coming in, wherever that is coming in through, whether it's the prisoners or the deputies. We need to make sure that the mental and healthcare services that are there are adequate. Obviously, something's wrong, and something's not working. Because if they're letting people die, for whatever reason, because they're having a mental health crisis, whatever, that should not be allowed. We need to take a look at who that contractor is and how do we improve it? Because whatever is there is not working. We need to work with the sheriff, of course. There's been the County Law Enforcement Review Board that has made very specific recommendations that have not been adopted. And that's where the board needs to put pressure. Yes, she's a duly elected official, but the board holds the power of the purse. And we need to put those pressures to prevent that from happening ever again, because it's way too many. And we need to make sure that Medi-Cal and Medicare, some of the reimbursement processes that provide these services are done well and efficiently. Because that's something I've been hearing a lot about is when they try to get reimbursement for those expenses, mental and healthcare expenses, they're not getting reimbursed. And I know it's getting in the weeds, but it's an important aspect of this conversation. Thank you.
First of all, we need to address with compassion that all lives matter, all of them. And I think that we're sometimes disassociated with, you know, out of sight, out of mind, right? And until we see it come to the light is when we remember what's happening. And first of all, I did talk to the sheriffs. They did tell me that they were severely understaffed, that this was something that's true. They're understaffed. They lack technology. And their foundation is also lacking, right? They have been mentioning that, you know, they're understaffed, so they have to work double shifts. And, you know, they don't have childcare sometimes, so where are their kids gonna be? And, you know, it's also a pressing job. So we need to talk about healthcare for everyone, right? For our youth, for the people that are incarcerated, but also for the people that are tending to these issues. And we need to be mindful that we need to allocate these resources. Mental healthcare is healthcare. And we need to be really on the sense of creating policy, that when we're creating policy that will help one, will help the other. We obviously need transparency. We obviously need investigations. And we need transparency in general. We need transparency in the budget that the county is allocating for these type of services. And again, that's why they want, I'm gonna ask for an audit when I get to the county. That is my promise. Because we need to understand how much we're investing in programs that have been proven not to work and how reallocating them makes sense. And we need to do better. We need to do better, because we're just not talking about one issue. We're talking about three different issues. So that's mental health, also mental health and the foundation of our sheriffs, and also the mental health and the programs that are created for the people, the youth, the people that are incarcerated. How are we gonna make this transition? How are we gonna work together with them? Because the end goal is to transition them into society, and we need to work on that a little better. Thank you.
The next question comes from me. I found this piece of paper. I didn't make it up, I promise. Okay. So what are your thoughts about the county's sanctuary policy that passed in December 2024, which stops the use of county resources for immigration enforcement purposes? Would you fight to support this policy if elected? Why or why not?
So again, right, from growing up with grandparents that immigrated here and that they went through all this struggle that were part of the Bracero programs, strawberry field pickers, I mean, I just am fully connected. This is in my DNA, right? This issue, this well-being of the community as a whole, and not making distinctions. I'm very compassionate about the stories. Each and every story is a story of finding the American dream here, locally. And we need to be compassionate when we address it, right? I... Marcela always tells me to talk about her story, right? She's... Marcela is my campaign consultant. And she's DACA. She's a Dreamer, right? She got brought here when she was a little kid. Her mom was fleeing a situation. They all came here as a family. And we need to understand that our community is full of success stories, regardless, regardless of their status. We have a thriving community and of good actors that belong here. We shouldn't be creating policy that not just only creates fear, creates hate, creates division, and puts also the sheriffs in a position where they have to enforce something that doesn't belong to them. They're understaffed, and they should be tending to crimes, not enforcing a policy that really doesn't pertain to the county. I'm telling you right now, I am against creating fear. I'm telling you right now that I am against dividing the community. And they, no one, no one should feel fear where they rest their head at night. And every elected official is here to represent them, everyone, regardless of their status. And I am gonna do that. Thank you.
Thank you for that question. So I don't support mass deportation. I don't support violating the rights of asylum seekers. I don't support birthright citizenship, stripping US citizens from birthright citizenship. So I have been, however, critical of how the rollout of that policy was conducted. I was critical because they never consulted with the sheriff, is what we were told by the sheriff. Now, it gets to a very tricky point where they're talking about warrants for violent offenders. Should they be coordinated between the sheriff and ICE? But that's where it gets tricky, because who enforces that? Who enforces that only the violent offenders are getting deported to ICE? We now know anecdotally, because I've been visiting with a lot of faith leaders and church-serving parishioners, saying, "Well, we are witnessing people who've only done a misdemeanor being deported." So that's where this abuse of the norm is happening, and that's extremely concerning. Now, what I've said also on the record is I believe that sanctuary policy should have been expanded. It should have increased the funding for legal services, for lawyers, for legal aid society, so that these folks that do have rights would have their rights protected. Because at the end of the day, we can't break the law. We need to make sure that people's rights are protected, immigrants are protected. And I don't believe in rescinding the sanctuary policy. I just thought the way it was rolled out could have been done better. Thank you.
This will be our final open-ended question, and then we'll go to some rapid-fire yes/no questions. So our final question will be asked by Daniel, a student at Carolina High.
I want to know, what are your priorities to support children and youth? And how would you involve youth perspectives on policy and program development, especially when it comes to our future affected by the climate crisis?
Thank you for that question. We need to support folks like you, right? That are involved, they're engaged, that are learning about the climate crisis that we're experiencing. It's egregious that this administration is returning to burning fossil fuels, absolutely stripping everything of the bedrock environmental laws. We need to make sure that you all, the current youth, are gonna bring that change eventually. So we need to make sure that we invest in these programs, that we partner with schools, that we empower and uplift y'all's voices, because we're not gonna have an environment or a climate to experience in the next 10, 20 years if we let this all go up in flames. We're seeing that with wildfires happening everywhere. We're seeing it with sea level rise. And it's still the day-to-day fights where people are saying, "Well, I don't believe in climate change." Well, you don't need to believe in it for it to be real. It's real, it's man-made, and it's happening at an accelerated rate, faster than scientists first predicted. And that's absolutely unacceptable. So we need to make sure that we partner with students who are already self-motivated. And there's so many of you that I've been so incredibly impressed and grateful to work with around the sewage crisis, like Youth We Will and some of the other groups. We need to just uplift you all. And we need to make sure that the county has a role in doing that. And again, I know I've come back to this, but you gotta invest. You gotta put money where your mouth is. You gotta put some resources so that the schools that are already lacking in resources have at least a fighting chance to organize these students and get them on track to positions of power. Because all of you could be in these positions of power, of decision-making power, if you wanted to. And I strongly encourage you to do that. If you're over 18, how many people over 18 do we have here? Can you please run for office? Thank you.
So I'm gonna talk about, I mean, we all know what's happening, the ignorance that's happening federally, right? We understand that. I'm gonna bring it local. When I was... How many of you know what the Cross Border Express is? CBX, yes? So I was in that discussion... 22 years ago, I was in that discussion table when we talked about getting tons and tons of contamination of the border region with just creating a bridge. And it was written in a little piece of napkin, "Why don't we create a bridge that just goes across the border to the airport?" And millions of people that are going just to the airport and waiting in line two or three hours, contaminating, are just gonna use up? And it seemed impossible, right? That would never happen. 22 years later, not 22, like 15 years later, it happened. So it's starting... When is the best time to plant a tree? 20 years ago. When is the second-best time today, right? So we need to think about longstanding holistic solutions. And it's funny, because I'm in the healthcare business, right? So when we were talking about COVID and vaccination, and I got to work with former consul general of Mexico, Carlos Gonzalez, county board supervisor Nora, and CDC, and just Health and Human Services everywhere and around, they didn't realize that we share a floating population of 100,000 people that are our workforce, that come back and forth every single day, that we have our farmworkers that have a visa that was never canceled during COVID, thousands and thousands and thousands of people coming north that weren't vaccinated. But they didn't think, "Oh, we share a strain all the way up to Riverside." The same thing happens with traffic. And the same thing, we have to advocate for public transit. And we need you at the table. We need to grab all these groups of young leaders, future leaders, and bring them to the side of the future of the region now.
If it's gonna be okay for you all just to go back and forth on yes/no?
Sure.
Okay. So I want to thank everyone who came and asked a question today. And now we're gonna move into our yes-or-no questions. So the first one. Do you support the county's unsafe camping ordinance?
No.
Will you continue to fund the county's immigrants' rights legal defense program?
Yes. Yes.
This one has some background with it. On March 10, the US Department of Agriculture canceled the Local for Schools and Local Food Purchase Assistance Programs, which provide funds to food banks and other assistance programs to provide food to those who need it, with a focus on underserved communities. In the first phase of the Local Food for Schools Program, 19 San Diego County school districts received over $1.9 million, which has had a local economic impact of $3.6 million. Do you think the county should dedicate funds to replace these programs?
100%. Yes.
All right. Transportation. The Youth Opportunity Pass Program, which provides between... Which costs between $6 and $7 million annually, allows youth 18 and younger to ride mass transit throughout the county for free. The federal funding that supports this program expires in June 2026. Do you think the county should fund the Youth Opportunity Pass Program after federal funding ends?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Okay. Policies affecting trans, non-binary, and intersex communities are being introduced at various levels of government, including efforts to limit access to gender-affirming care and restrict participation in sports. Do you think the county should protect access to healthcare, housing, and safety for trans, non-binary, and intersex individuals in San Diego County?
Yes, absolutely.
Next one. The county can provide public services by hiring its own employees or by contracting with outside workers. Each option has different implications for wages, service quality, and accountability. Do you believe the county should prioritize contracting out services over expanding its workforce?
No.
Absolutely not.
A right to counsel would guarantee tenants the right to free legal representation in eviction cases. Do you support a right to counsel in eviction proceedings?
100%. Yes.
Thank you. Those are our rapid-fire questions. To wrap up this event, with the part for each of you, To wrap up this event with the part for each of you, I'd like to invite you to do your closing statements. You have a minute for your closing. And because Carolina started, so we're gonna start with you for this section.
I just wanna thank you all so much for your very thoughtful... We've been to many forums, and I want to say by far this was the best. Thank you so much for your time. I just wanna reiterate, you've all heard my values, where I stand. My priorities are gonna be housing, homelessness, mental health care, public safety, quality of life, and of course, the Tijuana Sewage Crisis. It is why the San Diego Party, the Democratic Party, is endorsing me. It is why Working Families Party is endorsing our campaign. It is why the two largest county worker unions are endorsing us. It's why ACE has endorsed us. And I humbly ask for your support, because the next eight years are going to be shaped by this representative. We have the ability to take our lives in the right direction or fall back into Trump policies of old, and that's where we're up again. So I need all of you to get the word out and tell your family and friends to vote, whoever you end up voting for. I hope it's me. Thank you.
Well, I just want to start by saying that Paloma is not my enemy, right? I've known Paloma for a long time. I respect her, I admire her. We have this friendship, and the real enemy is not us. We share common goals. So we need to make sure we get as much of the vote out, because the Republicans always vote. So you need to understand that. I am just someone with 22 years of experience, that's been doing international trade, economic development, health care, the nonprofit sector, but also, for a long, long time, I've been involved in this community. So I want to do good, I want to work hard, I want to represent everyone, and I want to fight the federal system that is gonna really affect us if we have a Republican in this seat. We need to understand that. We are not the enemies. We need to get the vote out. And again, Carolina Chavez, if anyone wants to talk to me, please come and see me. Thank you for having me.
I want to start by thanking our candidates for their time. You know, this is a busy time in the election, and for coming here, for sharing your vision, for sharing your thoughts, for doing so with integrity and with respect for one another and for this audience. I want to thank you. I also want to thank you all for turning out. You have sent us brilliant questions, you have listened closely, you have given feedback with your class, you have shown respect to these candidates and to the space. And so I very much appreciate your time, your attention, your being here with us today. My final thing is that if you are not registered to vote, our candidates have talked to you about how important it is to vote. Every organization in this room believes it's important to vote. So you can still register at the Registrar Voters or Kenny Vote Center if you're not registered. And you need to vote by April 8th. And there are QR codes available in the room for you to find the nearest drop box or to find your nearest vote center. All right? With that, everyone have a lovely day. Be safe. Thank you.